Hi, my name is Dennis Carpenter and I have the privilege of serving as superintendent of the LEED Summit R7 School District. The presentation you're about to see is from our district's November 15th Board of Education meeting. At this public meeting, I presented my 100-day report to the Board of Education and the audience members in attendance. The report is based on several months' worth of looking, listening, and learning about our schools, and includes our strengths, our immediate commitments, short-term commitments, and long-term commitments to you, our patrons. You can find the complete written report on our district's website, with copies available at our district office and in various locations across our community. Thank you for taking time to watch this presentation, and we are grateful for your interest in our school district. Thanks for all you do. So during the past 130-some-odd days, I've had the opportunity to really engage and begin my tenure here as your school district superintendent. And I would tell you during that time, I've really tested my stamina in terms of looking, listening, and learning. I told the principals this morning that my natural inclination is to be a doer, and to roll sleeves up and start doing some things. But you can't enter into a new community and just start doing things, right? So I would tell you that my natural talent is to do, but over the course of my career, I've developed the skill to look, listen, and observe more. And it really served me well during these last several months. But man, am I glad it's over. Because we get to do some things now that I believe will greatly, greatly enhance the learning and lives of young people, who are already privileged in terms of residing in what I believe to be the best school district in our metropolitan area. And I say that unapologetically. We are the best school district in our metropolitan area. But after the first 100 days, I've really had an opportunity to really, really internalize the strengths of the district, to really, really look at what might be some immediate opportunities for the district, some short-term opportunities, and some things that we really need to look at on the horizon. And I wish I could tell you that I did that all alone. I didn't. I really engaged with community and various stakeholders and individuals here in this room to really get a comprehensive or holistic look at the educational ecosystem here in LSR7. So let's talk a little bit about that. Okay, I got it. There we go. What were the inputs that went into this document? This is a document that will be available to all of you at the end of the meeting. As soon as we complete this presentation, it's available, of course, to our school board members, and it goes in greater detail than I will go into this evening. Our goal, we ordered 500 of these, and to be quite honest with you, my goal is to have to order more by the end of next week. Because there are lots of involved stakeholders in our community, but given life circumstances, maybe working downtown, making their way back, we may not see them day-to-day. But they bring to us each day their most precious resource. So they too deserve to have this in their hands in terms of what the superintendent anticipates. So what are the inputs? At least two school visits to all LSR7 school buildings. There's not a building in the district that I have not been in at least twice already. And meeting with more than 500 community members and district staff members. Meetings with formalized groups that are in our community, the Citizens Advisory Committee, Business Roundtable, PTA Presidents, Economic Development, Educational Foundation, Chamber, Rotary Club, Retired Teachers Association. We've been engaging with all of those groups. And I've also had the opportunity to speak at various events in terms of getting to know this new guy, what's his motivation, what are his drivers. Those presentations have been posted online. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to see those. And I wish I could tell you all of the community events. We have lots of events in our community, and that speaks to the quality of community that we have, but participated in numerous, numerous community events. So in part, my young people on the front, they may embrace this, but this is a wordle. So I don't know how many of the persons my age and older know a lot about a wordle. But the way this thing works is we look at various questions, or we look at outputs. And when you look at the words here, here are the words, they get larger the more they show up. And then we produce this document. So overall, community sentiments about the district, here are the words that showed up a lot. Everyone I spoke with had very, very positive things to say about the quality of our staff. You see, that word is large. The school district being the heart of the community, that's a big deal to lots of people. We bring the best students to the door, better than most districts, that's kind of what I hear, loud and clear from our community. And I also heard community members speak of their individual volunteering and the service that they've put in to better the district. Lots of support. So that word "support" came up a lot in terms of community overall sentiments of the district. I said to our principals this morning that there are strong metropolitan areas across this country that would just really, really love to have the strengths that we have in our community, and I'll build upon that here in a little bit. Here was an interesting sentiment. This quote stuck with me, because you generally don't hear this a lot. I had an individual in the community say to me, "If you share your challenges with us, Dr. Carpenter, we're more than willing to help you in meeting them." And he framed that in the context of, "There's lots of good news in the district, and when I hear from the district, it's always the positive." But I'm a business leader in this community, so I get to move around the community, and I get to see some things that I just get to see in my day-to-day walk. And there are some kids that are participating in those huge successes. And as a lifelong LEED Summit resident and as a community member, I want to know that from the district, because I want to lend my support in that area. So that quote really, really resonates with me from a particular individual. I'm gonna have to challenge myself again here today. I promised everyone who engaged with me and gave me the opportunity to interview them that I would not interview, I would not identify them individually. So man, I wanna say this guy's name, but I can't do it. So we also got into a very, very sophisticated conversation with lots of stakeholders about what are the issues facing our community? What are those issues that we must face as we move forward as a community? And again, I heard the word "diversity" a lot. We're changing as a community, and are we ready to embrace that and really, really utilize it as the asset that it is? Those are my words, but diversity, growth. We hear a lot about schools and give it up for first-year principal David Mitchell, but Summit Laces is getting a little crowded, huh? Yeah, so we hear a lot about growth, and is the district ready to embrace that growth and make some facility-type decisions? The word "trust" came up a lot. And then you had words like "community," "listening to the kids' needs," "do we really, really listen to kids in terms of what we're putting forth as an institution?" That came up a lot. That word "trust," I'm just going to park there for a second and say that I have an idea, it may be all wrong. I think that word came up a lot just based on the proximity of the district to one occurrence that kind of took on a life of its own in the district. My guess is if we did this three years from now, diversity might still come up, growth might still come up, community listening to kids might still come up, maybe trust wouldn't. I would hope that that would be our future, our future story. And then I really wanted to know from some individuals, what are your expectations of yours truly? So as a new superintendent, new community member, what are your expectations of me? Big ideas with visibility, being visible, transparency, being a part of the community, and enhancing and building upon our tradition of excellence, all of which is positive. So when you hear these things, you're saying, "What can be wrong there?" But there is some pull and tug in some of this that we'll talk about as we move through the presentation. Based on all of the conversations, all of the listening, all of the visits, I developed what I believe to be the strengths of the school district, and there's greater detail in this report. But these are strengths, again, I'd say that even in some of our suburban communities, many of them would want to have these strengths. What are our strengths as a district? Through my eyes, they're talented, skillful, dedicated staff members. They are students that come to school prepared to learn each and every day. Average household income well over $70,000, close to $80,000. Average home price well over $191,000. By and large, when that's your story, students come to school very prepared to learn. High levels of parent involvement. My goodness, there's some data points that I don't wanna bore you all with, the data points, I want you to read it, but 99% of students were registered with all records ready to go first day of school. I can tell you I have a part of my not-so-distant past in which that number was in the 40s. And registration just took place days and days and days after the start of the school year. What an opportunity to build upon for young people. Excellent curricular resources and course and program offerings, robust courses. We have this course selection process, and if it makes it through the rigor of that process, the young people in here will get a new course. Lots of courses, lots of opportunities. That's very, very positive, but also there's some work that we do when we create that type of environment that I also want to talk about. Salary and benefits package of our employees, I think our beginning teacher salary is about second place in the region. I think if you get into the middle of our scale, we're about fourth place in the region. And although there's no clear way to quantify the benefits package, second to none, second to none. Operations and facilities, even prior to serving as your superintendent, I know that in the operations area, there are districts all around us that wait to see what LEED Summit is doing operationally. What type of HVAC units are they buying? I see they've gone to those compressed natural gas buses to see how that's working. So we lead the way in that area of operations. And the financial position of the district is just strong, strong, strong financial position. Back during the years of cost containment, those who were around during '08 and '09, you saw the district experience some cuts, cost containment because of the economy. And at that time, the board agreed that it would not have a fund balance below 15%. And right now, we're somewhere around almost 30% in terms of the reserves that we have on hand to do our work. That's a signal of a strong financial position. We also have our local tax digest that went up by 6.5% this past year. So, and a lot of that has to do with continual new construction. That's very, very important, and that signals, again, a strong financial position for the school district. So many communities would really, really want to have this level of strength. That has a lot to do with the forethought of many who came before me. That has to do with the individuals around this dais, and that has to do with the leadership across the district. So as I look at the strengths and I listen to the commentary across the district, we get to this area of, "What are some of the superintendent's immediate commitments? What are some of his immediate commitments?" Those of you who've had an opportunity to engage with me know that I bring to this conversation this whole notion of equity, and giving students everything they need in a given situation, realizing that that might be different for one student to another, and it might be different for one school to another. That's extremely important to me and something that I will go to my rocking chair doing on behalf of young people. With that being said, the community has a tradition of excellence. But you remember that word "diversity," you remember that word "growth," and you remember that commentary that the superintendent put forth about what does it take to remain the best during our back-to-school kickoff? And I tend to believe that this culture of excellence has to be braided with equity as we change as a community, and I'll talk more about that. So immediate commitments, increased learning and achievement of every single child. We have this mission statement that we prepare each student for success in life. But as I really, really look at the data and I really look at where we are, we do that well with the vast majority of our young people. But there are some young people in our district that are not participating in that mission They're small in number, just look at the free and reduced lunch percentage, the smallest of any of the Big Five districts in our metropolitan area. So this week, their mask, those students are masked in a 98.2% APR report. Put another way, we're touting, because it's important, that the state has an annual performance report. On a scale of 100, we're showing up at 98.2 on that scale. Very exciting. We should give ourselves a round of applause. But as we honor that, we also honor the fact that in all of the areas in which we can attain points, the only area in which we did not receive max points was the area of subgroup performance. That's why we ended up at 98.2, because we have students in various subgroups, whether it be a racial subgroup, whether it be an economic status subgroup, whether it be a special education subgroup, that are not participating in that statement. And that's something that if you have a heart for young people, should concern you. So addressing disparities and inequities to better serve all students, and really, really get into a point where we compare more favorably in Kansas City to the other Big Five districts. So here it is. Anytime a district like LEED Summit gets a data point, the first thing we want to do is we want to look at the North Kansas Cities, the Blue Springs, the Park Hills, and the Liberties of the world. That's our comparison group. You probably hear that in your social circles. And if you look at those groups of kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch in the district, we have the lowest percentage of said kids. And we know with that, learning is not unattainable, but it does bring with it some additional challenge. Well, look at North Kansas City, about half of their population falls into that category. If you look at Blue Springs, 10% more than our district. So then we start to grapple with, how does our performance compare with these districts? You'll get your booklet, you'll be able to digest this a little bit, but this is an important slide to me, and one that I'm really, really sharing with our leadership as we talk about how do we start to compare more favorably in the Big Five. So if you look on the left, that's the ranking, 1 through 5. And if you look across the top, that's various groups of students. That's the all-students category, the free and reduced lunch student category, EIP students, students with an EIP plan, ELL students, white students, black students, Hispanic students. So if you look at state summative assessments, tests that we do for the state of Missouri at the end of the year, there are 57 ranking opportunities for us to compare ourselves to the Big Five. And when you look at this data, it shows that we have the strongest clientele of the group. So when we look at the all-students category, in 57 opportunities, we only rank 1 or 2 in 15 of those categories. And we rank 4 or 5 in 26 of those categories. When we look at our free and reduced lunch students, in 30 out of 57 instances, we rank 4th or 5th. When we look at our, let's just look at any of them, our ELL students, in 20 cases, we rank 1st or 2nd. When you look at our white students, 27 instances, we're 4th or 5th out of 57. Looking at our black students, you see where we are there, and also with our Hispanic students. So a goal of mine is to enhance that ranking for our district. Our kids deserve it, our community deserves it. But let's talk a little bit about how we do that, board members. I don't believe we do that through drill and kill and more test prep. I believe that that can be done through innovation. I believe that that can be done through more rigorous learning. I believe that that can be done through greater access for all students to highly rigorous courses. I don't think it's done through more drill and kill, so let's be clear about that. And when we do that well, for a population of students who come to school by and large prepared to learn, we're gonna show up 1 in 2 in all categories. Little more information about that in your report that you'll get a chance to digest. Immediate commitments continued, enhancing workforce development and access to college courses for all students. So I'm spending a lot of time with the LEED Summit business community, and here's what I'm hearing. We're not getting the raw material graduating from schools we need to compete and be a part of the workforce of the future. So how do we get more students prepared? How do we get more students participating in programs that are somewhat similar to STA and MIC? How do we do that? How do we create a clientele of students that are ready to go on to a four-year college if they choose, go on to two years if they choose, or go directly in the workforce with some industry-recognized credential? And we all know now that those high-wage, high-paying jobs that many of our parents and many of us were able to get with no high school diploma. I have an uncle, significant, no high school diploma. Those folks are baby boomers, they're exiting. But as they exit, here's the opportunity. They're gonna be replaced, but they're not gonna be replaced with another person that doesn't have a high school diploma. They're going to be replaced with a highly skilled young person. So how do we create systems and create the conditions to allow our students to separate themselves from other students in this metropolitan area, whether they're going on to college or whether they're going directly into that space to participate in the world of work? Further defined 21st-century classrooms, that's an immediate commitment. It doesn't take a minute to walk through the MIC campus, our $40 million plant there that's serving some of our most highly specialized young people, to say, "Man, what would happen if all students had learning spaces like this? What could we do to change the trajectory of all of our students if they were privileged enough to have those types of learning spaces?" That's important, in the name of equity. And then we also need to address facility needs in terms of, when do we respond to population growth and build new schools? Or when did we improve upon or build upon existing schools? Those are some questions that we don't need to be reactive in answering, we need to be proactive in answering. And that's something that we're committed to by way of Dr. Hedrick's work on priority number two. And that notion that you heard about tonight of strengthening public trust, again, we build upon that in the report. So when we hear about a community that's growing and a community that's changing, there's this perception that it's happening at this fast, fast pace. But the data does not support that. The data shows us that it's happening at a very manageable pace. So if it's manageable, the question becomes, do we have the will to put systems in place so that we'll never be a district that just gets overtaken by changes in population? Put another way, we should become proficient with our 19.2%, and we should be able to create systems for our 19.2% so that when it becomes 22%, we plug students into that system. We already know it works, it's already tried and true. Now, if you are growing and your free and reduced lunch or your demographics were changing by 30, 40, 50% a year, it could get pretty hard to keep up with. But the data does not show us that that's happening. So we have an opportunity to, again, be proactive and get ahead of that curve. Another thing we hear a lot about now, and I wanted to look at the data, because I simply don't believe in making things up, but we hear about our students just coming to school with more challenges than they ever have. And I would just suggest to you that our data supports that notion. Kids are coming to school with many, many challenges, and I have to pause as superintendent to think about what role do we play in those challenges as a superintendent? I've been fortunate over the course of my career, as I look at this number and say 2,000 students were showing up with various mental health diagnoses, 13, 14, and a short four years later, that's up by 400 students. I've been fortunate enough to engage with lots of people who are a lot smarter than me over the course of my career. And one that comes to mind is Dr. Sidney Moss, who's the Global Director of STEM Initiatives for Discovery Education. I know all of you've heard of the Discovery Channel. But she interacts around this notion of project-based learning and STEM education across the globe. And when I had an opportunity to learn at her feet, she talked about a conversation she had with the LEED education official in Finland. And if you go and look at Finland and you look at this international assessment that's called PISA, generally Finland shows up number one on that international assessment in terms of students and their learning. If you dig deeper, you can come up with some other reasons aside from what they do academic that might play into it, but say what we wish, they're number one. And she was working with them because over the course of a couple of years, they saw a little bit of a dip in their results, and they called her in to talk about what was going on. This is her story to me. And she said after a sophisticated presentation of about an hour, the LEED education official looked up for the country and said, "This is simple. We've gotten away from what makes us who we are. We just need our students to start playing more. We stopped and they're not playing enough." So I think about that in terms of highly engaging opportunities, in terms of solving real-world problems, and in terms of project-based learning. When you see it at work, it looks like play, but it's a lot higher level of learning than working through a worksheet. So when I think about these numbers, I also think about how much have we done to diminish those types of opportunities for young people? Ongoing short-term commitments, equity-focused schooling that maximizes key opportunities to tightly couple the work of the district with schools. It's interesting, because when you talk with a lot of people, you hear a lot of the history of the district. And so I totally come in peace, but here's what I hear relative to the history. We've really, really centered over time, based on what I've heard, this whole notion of building-level autonomy. Put another way, each principal and each school staff being the captain of their ship. But I don't believe in making things up, there are opportunities for that, but around big goals and big ideas, the research tells us that we should be more tightly coupled as a district and as a school. With that being said, are we missing some opportunities to be more tightly aligned with our schools in the area of curriculum, instruction, and assessment? Put another way, what we do with young people and how we make sure it's happening for them? I think there's some opportunity there that we need to look at in the short term. A comprehensive formative assessment program. Put another way, we don't need to wait until May or June, and this year, when was it, almost September, to look at when the state tells us if a kid hit or missed the mark. There's some things that we should do real-time in our district to look at the performance of every child and create real-time safety nets and enrichments when they're necessary. And I think that's a great opportunity in the short term for our district. Opportunity gaps among various subgroups, I'm gonna build on that a little bit, we have some clear gaps that we need to be willing to address, even as we sit with a 98.2 APR. Suspension rates in terms of gender, family income, and ethnic groups. I've been really looking at our students who we see a gap in terms of their performance, and then I'm looking at, I'm overlaying that with, how do we discipline those students? And is that discipline an outlier? And we're gonna look at that a little bit also. Critique the district's current continuous improvement process to ensure that we're agile enough to meet the needs of the 21st-century learner. I've been an educator for 22 years now, and I would tell you that we're some of the best fellow educators at creating processes. We can create processes with the best of them. And sometimes it becomes more about the process than about the problem we're trying to solve. And if we get bogged down in the process and we're not agile enough to adjust and change for our students in real time, we have cohorts of students who are leaving the organization and we haven't given them what we know our best to be. You know, Asa Hilya talks about this notion of, "We already know what's best for students." The question is, how do we feel about the fact that we have not done it yet? We already know what those things are, but how do we feel about the fact when we have data points telling us that it's not happening? So I believe we need to be more agile. We're working on some pieces now in partnership with UCM and MCC around innovations track. And I was over at LEED Summit North, maybe some of the ladies in the audience today were there. Who's in with Speech and Debate? Okay, so I was spending some time with the crew from Speech and Debate, and I talked with some of them about this whole notion of, if there was a way to complete some of your gen ed courses during your high school experience, and maybe you can get 30 of those credits, and forego one year of college when you arrive on campus, would you delve into that? would you delve into that?" I just saw a little head start nodding right now. There's a head nodding. And by and large, they were saying, "Yes, why don't we do that?" I said, "Well, we do some things with MIC and STA. Well, I'm gonna be a lawyer, I'm gonna major in business, and those highly specialized tracks are the tracks for me." So some of that, in addition to some preliminary conversations, started spitting our conversation relative to, "How can we put something like this in place with our, for our students in conjunction with MCC and UCM, who are already key, key partners in our district?" And then we started looking at internal processes, our school improvement, continuous improvement model. Then we started looking at dates that we've socially constructed. And we said, "If we follow our current processes, that's gonna take us about eighteen months." If that were to take us eighteen months, count out this year's juniors and count out, count out this year's sophomores and count out this year's juniors. When the workforce is telling us that we can't meet that demand for them fast enough. So there are districts around us that have found out how to be more agile. And I think that's an opportunity for us to be more agile when we know some of the right things to do for, for young people. When I talked about this whole notion of gaps, this is one of the key gaps. When you look at our ACT, and we know that this has implications for how we set up student on his or her pathway to college and the like. When you look at the state of Missouri, we surpassed them. I think they're somewhere around twenty-one percent or something for the state, and we're at twenty-three-point-two when you look at that composite there. But I want you to look at that data over time. And when you look at that data over time, there's a clear gap between our largest two groups of students. And it didn't just show up one year, that gap has persisted over time. It's persisted over time. So in a district in which we talk about preparing each student for success in life, we have to grapple with this gap and talk about why it persists in our district over time. That's like super important. It's important for the young people in this room today and those who are coming this way. So that's just interesting to me when I see the persistence of that gap over time between our all students, between our white students and our black students. When I look at all of those student groups, lest we believe that one group is educationally inferior, then there's something inherent in what we do that we need to grapple with. So I think about access to rigorous curriculum, and I think about all of those things that we get the opportunity to work with to enhance that number. This is a little hard to see, and you're going to get your booklet, but this is when I overlay what's going on academically with what's going on on the discipline front in our district. So I took two years. I simply took last year, sixteen-seventeen, and then I just said, "Okay, give me a couple of years back, give me fourteen-fifteen." And so when we look at fourteen-fifteen and we look at sixteen-seventeen, there's not a lot about these charts that's different. Eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-nine students in fourteen-fifteen, eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one in sixteen-seventeen. When you look at that timeframe, in fourteen-fifteen, we had five thousand one hundred and eighteen total days of suspension, whether that be in school or out of school. And in sixteen-seventeen, that number was five thousand and nine, pretty similar. And when you look at that timeframe, male students made up about half of the students in our district and female students made up about half of the students in our district, both years. But when we look at the students who are participating, girls in the suspensions at the higher rate, it's the males. They're half of the population, and they represent about seventy-four-point-seven percent of the suspensions. Girls may just say, "We just behave better, not gonna let you off that easy, girls." Yeah, so that's something that we grapple with. And then we look at those other pieces where we talk about those gaps between our free and reduced lunch students and some of our kids of color. We look at that. Let's just look at sixteen-seventeen. Free and reduced lunch students made up about twenty-one percent of our total school district population. But they made up fifty-seven-point-eight percent of all of our suspensions. What does that mean? Why does that happen? What are the disconnects that cause that to happen? Those are issues that a district that talks about all students must grapple with. We must grapple with. When I think about African-American or black students in our district, they make up about twelve-point-five percent of the population. But they're almost three times that number participating in the suspensions at a rate of about thirty-three-point-three percent. What causes that to happen? When they only make up twelve and a half percent of the population? Those are issues that I believe as a district, our students deserve our grappling with those issues. And here's what I believe I've learned over the course of my career when I think about these types of numbers and when I think about these types of numbers. The first thing that an educator like myself, who likes to roll up his sleeves and do something, the first thing that I do is I say, "What do we need to do? Let's start doing it right now." Because I'm trying to influence that result. Good person, good intentions, I want to influence that result, so I'm gonna get started right away. And then that fits pretty neatly in my stacks. If I do this this month, and I do that next month, and I train this group, and I move that group, something's gonna change. But what we're finding is that's not happening. The issue still persists. And I believe that there's some messier work that would get us to a different place when we start to grapple with beliefs. And what are the beliefs that are driving our behaviors that are getting us to our results? And how do we really, really start to have meaningful conversations about our beliefs when certain students stand before us? Our belief when a child comes to school not prepared, when eighty percent of our students do. And how do we respond to that? And I think that's a messier conversation, but I think it can get us to the point of influencing our results. And that's promising, but that's the work, and that's difficult work. And we're starting some of that even as I speak. Ongoing short-term commitments. Systemically interrupting those district barriers to access to those rigorous courses and programs and being able to take those things to scale. Put another way, the handful of students who participate in IV, IB in comparison to our total number of students and the handful that participate in MIC and STA, although they're very important and they're doing meaningful work, absolutely they are. But how do we take those things to scale so more kids can participate? Maybe they just become less highly specialized. Maybe we examine some of the entry requirements and realize that some of the entry requirements that we're putting forth are keeping out the very kids who need to be a part of it. I had a young lady tell me I didn't sign up for MIC because when they came in and discussed it with my school, they talked about internships and having to have the opportunity to provide my own transportation for an internship. And the young lady said, "I didn't have that, so I just didn't participate." Well, as a district, we should grapple with that. We should be calling the Judy Hedricks of the world and say, "Let's figure this out." Because we have young people that are not participating because of their personal life circumstance. And how can that be okay in a place called public school? So that's something for us to, to work with. Just forging this culture of equity-focused decision-making. Put another way, sounds like equal, but really it's not. And if you go back here, that has to do with our workforce and some of the action that the board was taking prior to my arrival that I support one-hundred percent. But it's not robbery to any kid to expect to come to school and experience a workforce that mirrors the student population. We think that's very important, and I have to say that unapologetically, I believe that to be important. So let's look at our student population and how it compares with our teaching population. When we look at our student population, we know that half of our students are male and half of our students are female, by and large. But we only have about twenty percent of our teaching population that are male. What can we do to be intentional about influencing that, intentional? We also know that seventy-five percent of our students are white, twelve percent are black, four percent are Hispanic, three percent are Asian, and about five percent are multi-ethnic or mixed-race students. So we think about seventy-five percent of our students being white, ninety-six-point-nine percent of our teachers are white. So that means some of the other groups we talked about aren't experiencing teachers that look like them to any degree. And there's a lot of research out there that talks about that being important when all things and all credentials are the same. So we should grapple with that. And Dr. Miller would tell you that he's been working on it, and he has. He's talked to our folks about it, have building leaders who talk about it. But I would argue that in order to influence that, we're gonna have to put our practices under a microscope. And that's an opportunity that rests in those data. Targeted recruitment is a part of it. Developing strategists to ensure that the superintendent provides instructional leadership within the organization to implement strategists district-wide. That's important. When you talk about the community wanting the superintendent to be very visible, I believe that that's extremely important. But I also believe that there are times when I sacrifice being in a meeting upstairs with the folks in curriculum and leadership to be present in a community space. And I think over time, we're gonna have to figure out other ways to get that accomplished because the research is clear. If you don't believe me, listen to Mike Smoker, listen to Bob Marzano. And they both would tell you that the superintendent should be providing direct instructional leadership in the school district. So we balance that, and that's an opportunity to balance that work, and that's on me. Long-term commitments. One thing that I believe is very important in our district is we have the floor of our district and we have the ceiling. And we must raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. But I think our data and our performance tells us that we must accelerate the raising of the floor. I think our kids deserve that. And that's how we maintain, in terms of my long-term commitment, the district's tradition of excellence. Working with other governmental entities, I think we've gotten off on a good, with a good start there to address issues of growth. All those facility issues, they're gonna be a part of a growing community over time. You know, there's an application that went to Amazon the other day from the Kansas City region. And in that region, regional application, there were six sites that said if Amazon wanted to come to the Kansas City region, here are the six best sites we have. Lee Summit was one of the six of the entire metropolitan area on both sides of the state line. If that were to happen, we'd grow by leaps and bounds. So how do we address the issues related to that in a proactive manner? That is your workforce, I hope you see it coming up and coming up and coming up. Enhancing support and maintaining our robust digital environment. Our connect-to-learn program is second to none. I think our challenge is really, really making certain that we place our curricular resources in that environment, and it just becomes a part of what kids do in every single class, every single day. Merging those curriculum resources into that environment. And focusing on equity in all areas, and of course, we talked about performance in subgroups. Extremely, extremely important. So I was over one day. Everybody's laughing already, you haven't seen anything yet. So I was over one day at Great Beginning, Great Beginnings, and had an opportunity to engage with the building principal and engage with staff. And then they took me outside to the playground. And when they took me outside to the playground, these kids are having a blast. By the way, we have the best playgrounds I've ever seen across the district, second to none. And that's super important. Remember what we said about, "We just didn't play enough." So we have the playgrounds to do it. So over at Great Beginnings, there's this little fella here. And he tells me, he says, "I wanna ride you on my track, I wanna ride you on my tricycle." I was like, "You can't ride me on that thing, no, you'll hurt yourself. You'll get hurt if you try and do that." "No, I wanna do it, I wanna do it." I was like, "You can't do that, son, you're gonna hurt yourself." I had good intentions. My intentions were very good. But in my own way, I was dictating to this young person what he needed to do versus listening and honoring his voice. And I had great intentions when I was doing it. And so as I was processing through that, I thought about access to rigorous courses. And are there some things that we do that coach kids in different directions? With good intentions, I might add, with good intentions. And what would happen if we let that child in and do what Mr. Flick just said on the video? "I expect the most out of him, but if you heard him loud and clear, he said, 'I also scaffold.'" Put another way, I give them what they need, and that's equity in that environment for them to be successful. So we thought about this thing, and yours truly got on the back of it. And I whispered some coaching in his ear, and you see, I can do it alone. So there's a teacher who came along to assist us. Put another way, as I look at this plan, I can't do this alone. I'm gonna need many of you out there in that audience to come along with me to do this very, very important work. But when that happened, when I did some coaching, when she did some assisting, the teacher there. Start this thing up and let's see what happened, Amy Gates. And if we fall over, we get back up and try again. Yes, because we're gonna try some things new for young people. And we might have to try again, right? Yeah, so there he is, he has this little boy, and I'm telling him, "That's all you can do. Stop saying you want to do me, that's the best you can do." And then finally, I bought in. I listened to his voice and I got a little help. Look at there, we struggled in the beginning, we struggled. But he did more than I ever thought he could do when I gave him the opportunity. And guess what? We almost went off the road, and guess what I did? I scaffolded, I pulled us back on. I pulled us back on. You know, and when I looked at that thing, that's exactly what I'm talking about in this one-hundred-day plan. That's exactly what I'm talking about in this one-hundred-day plan. Had an opportunity to learn from this guy a few weeks ago at the National Center for Educational Research and Technology. George Kuros, and he gets it. Has this new book, and it's flying off the shelves in educational circles, and it's called The Innovator's Mindset. And he really challenges us to stop graduating children from some of the best school districts in the country. And when kids graduate, the only thing they know how to do well is school. And he challenges us to be more innovative with our young people and how that's a demand. Because our students don't benefit if the only thing they know when they leave is school. So how do we become more creative and more innovative in our approaches? And here's what George challenged us with when he ended his presentation to a group of about seventy-five superintendents from across the country. He said, "The biggest barrier to innovation is our own way of thinking." And you can stay in that space and keep that way of thinking, but just know that someone, somewhere, is doing exactly what you're saying can't be done. That's our opportunity, that's our challenge, that's what this report is all about. Give the board members their reports, and let's put them back there, Ms. Phelan, and let's let people start to digest them. And we'll put them all over this community, and we'll continue to do this work so that we become the model of suburban education for this country. There's nothing about the resources we have at our disposal that tells us we shouldn't be. The only thing is, how do we feel about the fact that we might not be that right now? That's our opportunity. That concludes my report, Mr. President.